We're gonna start.
All right, are we ready? I'd like to call the special meeting of the Scioto Township Board of Trustees to order. This is a meeting was called to hear a presentation from our fire chief and to discuss how to fund fire and emergency services in Scioto Township. That is essentially our agenda, but we will have the roll call and then a pledge of allegiance. And I believe for special meetings, we have public comment at the beginning, is that correct?
Yep.
Yeah, so we'll have public comment and then we'll go into the presentation.
Hathaway?
Present.
Palmer? I think she's on her way. Flintoff here, Brazil. Harry?
President.
Noel?
President.
Reiser?
Present.
We have Coram.
All right, let's join the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the best of circumstances. Is there anyone present who would like to make a public comment? So you have three minutes each speaker.
Kathleen Brant, South Resident. I've missed you guys. I'm back. I want to talk about some facts that are being thrown around regarding building a second fire station as well as some comments about the necessary tax mills for this. I've done some research to see what other communities are paying at price per square foot to build a fire station. The opposition group stated that it was $250 a square foot. You can't even buy a house in Scioto for less than 300,000. This is a specialized building with specialized equipment. So I have left a document at your desk and I've highlighted costs. These projects started maybe a few years ago, but they expect them to be completed this year. This is from the Mitchell Associates Architect. It's kind of hard to find square footage prices. But you see on here the average for these buildings and we could even look at something comparable size, but the average is $750 a square foot. So the $250 a square foot from the opposition is not realistic and is not factual. Also, I had found an article, Ann Arbor wants to replace one of their fire stations, 12,000 square feet at a cost of $833 a square foot. The building is, did I say 12,000 square feet? What the chief is proposing is something north of 16,000 square feet. So I think we're getting a bargain for what he's working on. Another thing that we could look at is what are comparable townships? What is their millage contribution to support their fire services? I know the chief has put a lot of information out there about what other communities have in terms of fire stations, staffing. And of course, we're way below that, but I think if I've started to look at this, if we looked at what other communities are charging their residents, it's in the north of three mills. So if we did a study on that, that's the kind of facts that the residents need, not some antiquated consulting numbers that don't make any sense.
Thank you. Thank you, Jackie. Is there anybody who'd like to join by Zoom? Any public comment by Zoom, please raise your hand. I see Rob Pattinson. Rob?
Thank you, Rob Pattinson, Scioto Township President. I would like to thank the Scioto Township Fire Department for the fast response to our home when there was a very loud explosion right outside and the top of the power pole was on fire. It took about 90 seconds for them to respond after I called 911. This experience just brings home how important it is for our community to support the fire department and provide the equipment they need to do the job and enough people to do it safely. Skip Davis of the Fire Department shared with the Scioto Community News email thread that yesterday there was a call from Ann Arbor to ask Scioto to cover a station while they responded to a structure fire. That left Scioto virtually unmanned and unable to respond to emergencies. We would have to ask another department to respond to anything that happened in Scioto during that time. Scioto's main fire engine is out of service and down for repairs. That means our fire department has to respond to any calls with the 14-year-old two-seater backup fire engine and a third firefighter would have to take the rescue truck. Previous boards have neglected and sabotaged the fire department and we are playing catch-up trying to get the needed personnel and equipment that is reliable. Please find a way to better fund our fire department so that residents and firefighters are safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. I see no others in the meeting.
In that case, let's proceed with our presentation and discussion.
Can I be brought in to present, please?
Thank you. All right, thank you, Board. Manager Parker, Board of Trustees. We spent a little bit of time, the manager and I, kind of discussing amongst ourselves what kind of information we'd like to give you tonight. So I've got a handful of slides here. I've just sent this out to the board. We worked throughout the day today to get it finalized for you. Questions, just throw them out at any time and I'm happy to answer them. And I think some of the stuff we thought would be appropriate to start with, if I can make my slide advance here, would be some of the issues that we're hoping to address by constructing a second fire station. And a lot of those issues were identified by the Fire Services Guidance Committee. If you remember, a year and a half ago, this committee was formed, did a lot of research and made some recommendations, much of what our funding ask to the residents was about. So first of all, reduction of overall response times. One thing we identified that what one station and the growth of community has, we have a hard time reaching certain areas of the community. The southeast section of Scioto in particular has extended response times. Mr. Brazil, you'd mentioned in a previous meeting that you've seen several homes kind of in your neighborhood or in that area that have burned to the ground. That's a direct result of response times, response times being too long specifically. Our medical emergencies suffer the same fate. Our firefighters on our fire engine deliver basic life support care. They can do CPR, they can defibrillate, they can insert airways, they have some medications they can give. But all those things are best given quickly. And if we arrive 10 to 12 minutes into an emergency situation, our chances of success go down significantly as compared if we're there in four or five minutes. A meeting of the Miosha's two-in, two-out requirement. Now, this is a requirement that's in statute that requires us to have two personnel assembled outside a building or a dangerous environment before we send two people inside the building. So that in that case of our firefighters inside the building get incapacitated, hurt, there's two folks to rescue them. With three firefighters on duty, we don't meet the Miosha requirement. So there's many situations where we can't enter a building until we have mutually aid respond. If that's a fire scene, clearly the fire continues to grow. We can apply water from the outside, however, it's nowhere near as effective as getting in and putting the fire out from the inside. In certain cases, gas leaks. We can't go in and isolate the area where the gas is leaking from and ventilate the structure, so gas continues to build up. Carbon dioxide incidents. If we don't know there's someone inside there, we have to wait and further jeopardize that person may be inside. An adequate response to most of our calls. About 70% of our calls, we respond to adequately. Those are less severe medical calls. We put our three firefighters or four firefighters, whichever we may happen to have on duty, on your scene. They're able to address most minor issues, work with HVA and get our folks off to the hospital. We under respond to 70% or 30% of our calls. Any fire in a community, we under respond to. Car accidents and our more severe medical calls. It's about 70% of the time, we're okay, but 30% of the time, we're not. Training improvements, addition of a training officer. Miosha has made a lot of improvements in training. Michigan Firefighters Training Council has made significant improvements in both quantity and quality of training requirements. They've changed the standards for us to be fire service trainers and also in delivery of our medical continuing education. Amongst just the bare minimum, we have to get 60 to 80 hours per person of training over a three-year renewal period. And we don't have anyone on staff who can develop curriculum for an intensive training course or provide the continuing education requirements. We do our everyday company training where we stretch fire hose by ourselves. We don't have oversight of that. And additionally, consistency across our three shifts is important with the improvement of a training officer. And lastly, the ability to begin EMS transport. Many of our neighbors are doing it. In fact, I read an article today, Ann Arbor's looking to purchase a second. Basic life support transport ambulance, they found the one that they put in service is overworked. Chelsea is doing the same. They have one in service and it's worked. We want to work in conjunction with Huron Valley Ambulance, the ALS provider, to take care of some of the lesser medical calls so that they can respond to the more severe, the heart attacks, the more severe calls where they need more intensive care. They can't do that if they're taking a minor medical emergency to the hospital. They're short-staffed like many other ambulance providers are. And the Fire Service Guidance Committee also came up with a handful of steps to implement, right? Step one, fully staff our Z Road Station with our manager's leadership. Our budget this year appears to do that. We still have some work to go, fully funding that Z Road Station, but we're making significant improvements this year with the addition of a fourth personnel. Step 1.5, the committee placed in there, they did not recommend it, but that was the addition of an EMS-only station in the southeast section of Scioto. Our firefighters' union contract requires anyone we hire to be a firefighter. And it doesn't make a lot of sense to me to put two people in a vehicle that's not capable, two firefighters in a vehicle not capable of responding to a fire and say we're improving coverage. For medical calls, probably, but to more critical calls, no. So we did not recommend that as a committee. Step two, addition of a second station and staff with a fire response. Step three, add a transporting EMS component. The reason that's an additional step, the state requires us, once we obtain a license to transport, to staff that vehicle 24/7. So we do need additional staff above and beyond our firefighting staff to be able to staff that vehicle 24/7. And then they also identified a step four, which was adding a second fire vehicle to the other station, but they did not recommend it. Theory was we would have a primary engine at each station. We'd have a ladder truck in service in the township all the time and an EMS transport vehicle. I agree with the committee's recommendation. We don't have the level of fire we need to have a dedicated ladder truck. We can use it as an engine as well. And also our call volume doesn't justify having those two vehicles in service there. So I'd agree with that. So those are the three steps that really were identified. Several ways to fund. Township has chosen to fund the Fire Department with an Act 33 special assessment. And there's pros and cons to that. Act 33 is very specific for police and fire. Those are the only items it can be used for. Straight by the letter of the law, there's no vote of the electorate allowed, or I'm sorry, required. We can obviously allow that. The Board can, with a simple vote, raise 10 mills towards fire protection and 10 mills towards police protection. These do come with some other qualifiers, though. Every year, you have to have an annual noticed public hearing. That is the notice that goes out to the landowners in the community. They have an opportunity to come in for the public hearing based on the expenses that are projected for the fire department. And it really doesn't require an end date. There are certain communities, some very close to us, who don't have a voted Act 33 assessment. They simply have an Act 33 and every year they go through the process and establish what their military or their assessment rate will be for the Act 33.
Which terms are those?
Specifically Canton Township is what I'm thinking of.
Is it a charter township?
I believe it is.
How many mills in Perpetuity?
I don't know what their assessment is and change is annually. Boy, I'm not sure which Dexter or Webster Township, they had a voted Act 33 assessment and I want to say it was 2.4. They let it lapse without renewing it. The Board last year assessed the 3.4 under their, or the 2.4 under their authority and then my understanding is put into the voters again to renew.
That same amount or in addition?
I'm not sure yet.
Okay.
Thanks. Yeah, we'll see when it comes up. Township can also fund fire services via a millage. Millage can basically used for any governmental function, does require a vote of the electorate. There's no public hearing notice required, however, you still do have to comply with your normal budgeting process, which includes a public hearing. And it also has some disadvantages, maybe subject to other tax captures such as entities such as the DDA or any other entities that may capture taxes. My former employer originally used an Act 33 assessment, then switched to a millage. So you know, these are used back and forth, however the community best finds its need.
And the millage is subject to the Headley Amendment as well.
It is, yes. This slide will really talk about the overall scope of the project excluding staffing. And this is where we come to our larger numbers. And we talked about ways that we can potentially lessen the burden on the taxpayer. So give you the overall big picture scope. This is really what we're looking at, 330,000 for the property. Scioto's already purchased that. We've done an environmental assessment on the property and the property is good to be built on. It's a 40,000 the township's committed. Preliminary design, that was a work we did with our architect over about a six-week period. That's complete. Construction estimate, they estimate about eight point, roughly eight and a half million dollars. That's just the construction of the building. They recommend about a $400,000 contingency be included. Professional services, that would be legal fees, that would be architectural fees, any other professional services to be part of the project. And then about half a million dollars in soft costs that would go to furnishing the building, you know, putting tables, chairs, desks, workstations, that type of equipment in the building, whatever we can't bring over from our currency road station. On the next column over, we've got the cost for equipment, ladder truck and a water tanker to put into the building to operate. Total project cost of around 13,4, net zero. The township's made a commitment to a net zero project. It's about a $1.34 million add-on. To give you a total cost of around 14,7. Township has already funded roughly $700,000. Some of that comes through commitments from developers. We have some that we should be getting soon, some we should be getting in the near future and some projects, I understand, are still out there that will have these similar components that would help offset the costs.
Jay, could you explain how you purchased the property? Where, please?
Absolutely.
There's been a lot of questions.
Yeah, so several years ago, the Township Land Preservation Commission was working to preserve a farm on Wagner, running basically south of Liberty Road, kind of that triangle east, the farm field that's due south of there. As part of that project, it was identified that there were probably two community projects that would need to be done there at some point in the future. We've had studies that show that was a good location for a fire station. And additionally, the township, in the future, there's potential that there will be need for additional water storage and that being a high point in the water line was identified as a potential site also. So as part of that process, the township was able to secure 10 acres to be used for those in the future.
That was about $300,000 in fiscal year '22.
Yeah, 330, I think.
Maybe 330, yeah. Fiscal year and '22, general funding.
So yeah, the majority of that parcel was preserved, I think, over 110 acres. There's about a 10-acre carve-out for municipal stuff.
So we're not stealing from the cows.
We are not. The cows are stealing from us.
Needing to the cows. We're making money off of it.
The cows are pretty active, trust me.
My understanding is.
I got it pretty good.
My understanding is there's some sort of lease agreement and it's probably a dollar or something. So we're happy to have them using our farm field.
No bartering.
It's one cow per acre, so together.
So with that being said, you know, clearly that's a big number. So we're looking for ways to identify other funding sources that would help offset the costs. One thing I'm working on or actually I've got completed already, assistance to firefighters' grant. This is a grant that's administered by FEMA. It's an annual appropriation from the federal government. It's a competitive grant. And we've applied this year for some funds towards a ladder truck for a community our size. Our maximum award would be a million dollars. So if we were to get that, I'd be very happy to apply that towards a ladder truck along with some of the other funds that could potentially reduce what the taxpayers would have to come up with. State appropriations and/or grants. Supervisor, manager and I have met with our state legislators numerous times. We're attempting to find some state appropriations to help offset the costs. We think that that stationed its location on the western side of the county would be a very strategic location to help out our municipalities as well as our community, our other neighboring municipalities as well as our community. And we're making a case that it's, there's a lot of regional benefit to this building and we've got some traction and hopefully we can find some state money to help offset the costs. Additionally, and this is unrelated to this project specifically, but there was a grant available through the state for firefighter turnout gear. That's the protective clothing you wear. It's for full-time firefighters only. That guidance is coming soon on how to apply for that and get it, but my understanding is that when we do, it's basically a guarantee. That being said, that will help offset some of our budgeted costs so that we can reallocate those towards a different project. We probably budget 20 to 25 thousand dollars a year towards this. And while it's not a large amount, if I can, you know, not budget for firefighter year for three years, that's a good chunk of change if it records a project.
Is this the protective clothing? The material is changing, so it's not the forever chemicals?
Oh, yeah. Unfortunately, right now, they don't have a PVAS-free product, but yeah, they're working towards that. Federal appropriations and grants, we're working with Senator Peter's office now for a grant. We just got it submitted today, I understand. We put a lot of work and effort into that, the supervisor and I, to get that. We identified the correct source or the correct grant project, worked through the process, fine-tuned the numbers. We have that submitted today. Some of our neighbors did get an award to help offset costs of a building through that, Chelsea in specific. They received a small award through there. We're hoping for a larger one, obviously, but you know, so we're working there. PUD projects, this is some of the funding we have available and coming available. PUDs going to the community. The township is looking for community benefit and in the form of infrastructure improvements for the fire department. We've been reasonably successful in getting some funding in and that's getting included in these projects and will help offset the costs as well. And also the SAFER grant. This is a grant specifically through FEMA for firefighter staffing. We're going to apply for that, help offset the costs of staffing if they are awarded. As I review that, I think asking for three firefighters for our existing station has some merit, but based on their criteria, there's potential that hiring 12 firefighters to staff a second station would move up our chances of obtaining that grant.
And that's an annual opportunities?
Correct, it is an annual opportunity. So it's been funded for probably the last 15 years and continues to do so.
Do you apply every year?
Typically apply every year, yes. Some other things we can do to help is reduce the scope of the project. So our schematic design that we performed initially, we're on a project timeline, we needed to get something done and a product done. And that's where the project ended. So we basically came together with our best ideas, put it together and were unable to refine it. If we were to be successful in obtaining funding for this project, we would refine this. We'd fine tune the project and I expect we could probably take about 2,000 square foot out of the building and still meet all our objectives. Put us down to around 15,000 square feet total. Net zero components are, you know, getting close to a million and a half dollars worth of the project. So, you know, there's something else to consider. I understand the township is 100% on board with sustainability, but you know, that does come at a cost. Other station projects of comparable size and scope. City of Dexter, they're in the process of designing a five-bay 1,800 square foot station. In 2022, they bonded approximately $9.3 million through a 2.0 millage levy. Green Oak Township, in the process of starting a six-bay 18,500 square foot station. They're looking at about 12 and a half million dollars. They bonded in 2022. Their bond rate or their bond millage is 0.5905 mills to pay for their building. Canton Township, three-bay 13,400 square foot station, $5 million. That was completed in 2021. That seems like a huge jump, but we have to think that project was planned three years before that. So this is almost a 10-year-old project that they got done for $5 million and it's a substation, not a main station for that square footage. And then Ann Arbor, they're working on a two-bay replacement for one of their fire stations around 12,000 square feet, 10-plus a million, 2021 estimate, and they're still waiting funding for that project. So we can remove some components from the project to help lower the costs. So first of all, finding other funding sources for ladder truck. We're actively working on that and out of that $14 million, $15 million total scope, if we can pull $1.75 million out by some developers helping contribute to that and getting some state appropriations, the entire scope of the project goes down. Delay in purchase of a water tanker. The station would need a water tanker to service the rural areas, but we have one. That water tanker needs to be replaced. We have already authorized replacing it. If we were to, when our new tanker comes in, not take it out of service, we'd be making a strategic decision to say, well, I understand we're falling outside of NFA spec. I understand we're running an old vehicle. I understand that if it were to break down, it might go to the scrap heap. However, if we can get another two or three years out of it, with none of those things catastrophically causing it to go out of service, that could save us some money in the short term. We could reduce the cost around $12 million for the building. I did look at some numbers. You know, if we look at, say, a half mil for construction for the fire station, generate around $850,000 a year. I figured around 2.5% inflation, 12 years, we'd be looking at around 11 and a half million dollars and 16 years, about $16 million. If we reduce that and extend the term a little bit, 0.4 mil assessment would raise 680 roughly a year. In 20 years, would generate 16 and a half million dollars. And if we were to bond out, that would obviously come with some expense other than just the building. We'd have bond payments we have to make, we'd have interest we're paying. But that reduces the burden upfront and allows us to spread those costs over time. So if we back out some of the other items, you know, we've already paid for the property, we've already done our environmental assessment, if we, you know, we're done with the preliminary design. And if we can find other funding sources for a ladder truck and tanker or delay purchase, we could bring that project cost down to 11 and a half million dollars. So you know, a far cry from the almost 15 we were talking about before.
I have a question. So the net zero, what does that include?
So there's insulation components, there's heating, ventilation and air conditioning components. I'd have to look back at all the specifications, but it's all the things to make it essentially a net zero building. There's some solar that goes with it.
Solar, geothermal?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, what are the costs for those if it breaks down? Do you have to estimate that? You have to estimate that if you was a total net zero as well.
Gillian, I would, I would just say the P I A, when they did this study, they broke it down in detail with all of that.
I would like to see that.
Yeah, the study we, and and this was bid out, we did the specs, we bid it out, we had a presentation, August twenty twenty-three.
We had a presentation, August twenty twenty-three.
Yep, yeah, we had a presentation um from the architect.
Oh, oh, no, 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 I know what, yes, but I was specifically talking about net zero because. We're looking at cutting a tanker, ladder truck, those things that we need in the community. And net zero is, that helps the environment, but it doesn't help our citizens. You know, i- i- as far as cost goes, I'm looking at it from that point of view.
Yep, a- absolutely, a decision the uh township board would have to make.
And and chief, I just want to note that zero point five mil for capital, you know, you're ballparking twelve years, eleven point five million. That's um the same capital question that we put out a year ago, correct, point five?
So we had point seven five for capital.
Point seven five.
Right, because we included uh our ladder truck and the water tanker for the building in that, so this would be a reduced scope.
From point seven five down to point five, okay.
So another thing we talk about is reduction in the steps, right, the steps or a slight delay. The fire service guidance committee intended us to get to step three in eight to ten years. Uh that was fully developed, if we look at it from smaller components, maybe we say, like with this budget, we get step one complete, we fully staff our Z road station. Uh the two point oh mil assessment, the the tax sanity group, the opposition group uh uh supports. Uh w- would reach that goal, uh and it would address two of the six issues that are identified by the fire services guidance committee. That would be meeting two in, two out. And the ability to respond to more than one uh incident at the same time. Uh if we have, if we got this accomplished and we had two minor medical emergencies, we'd be able to hit both of those ourselves without calling each other later. Uh it doesn't uh reduce our response times, it doesn't uh deal with the adequacy issue of thirty percent of our calls. Uh EMS transport, and it does potentially address the training issue, so that that I'll give you a, I'll give it two point five. Uh finish step two, doesn't get to transport EMS service, but vastly improves our fire non-transporting EMS service, so if. If, you know, we get to step one, uh step one complete, we get our Z road station staffed this fall. And really start working on step two, uh two to three to four years and have that accomplished, we've made significant improvements. Uh that addresses five of the six issues identified by the fire services guidance committee, it just leaves the EMS transport component uh out there. And then I I also put on there, consider transporting EMS separately. Uh that may not be an option uh based on how uh our ALS provider continues to perform. Uh if they can hire more paramedics, get more ambulances on the road, it may not be an issue. Uh but if they uh if they're not able to do that and they continue to have more staffing issues and higher call volumes, that may force our hand a little sooner. That's why I say it may not be an option, um because that's the uncertainty of of that uh. Hiring and uh training and retaining in paramedics.
And chief, would step two be the second station?
Correct, step two is a second station built and staffed.
Yeah.
I- if we are not able to secure ladder truck, or not able to secure a water tanker, short term, we've got a backup engine we can put down there. You know, so some of these capital projects could potentially be deferred. Not forever, but potentially be deferred for a little bit. And with that, that concludes my prepared remarks, and I'd be happy to uh address any questions the board may have or or help in the discussion.
For the questions for the chief.
Anthony wants to start.
How do you know?
I did have a question. Andy and I talked about it yesterday, but I I want to wait on asking question because Mark. Was going to do an update on what's happened with the small group. And I wanted to wait and perhaps not even a- ask you the question because it's changed a little bit now.
I can certainly do that, so let's put everything in a better perspective, so as you know, we've been talking about all our fire options here for quite some time. We uh since the last two meetings, met with the opposition group or the sanity group, whatever. Terminals partnership group is what I like to think of that way, I think we're all, we're still silent, we may have a different opinion, but they still aren't residents of Sile Township. The outcome of that meeting was, we need to develop a comprehensive business plan. Make a business case, why are we doing this, how are we gonna do it, when are we gonna do it, what are those funds, what are the options? What are we rallying those against, what are the comparables, all that detail in a comprehensive and logical methodology and structure. Uh Andy and I and uh Mr. Reed have worked on the framework for that. And that is currently in in play right now, that's not a, alls you gotta do document, this is a very. Comprehensive document requiring hundreds of hours of investment, if you want to answer all those questions and answer with with accuracy and detail and fact.
So is there one that made the guidance?
No, no, at least put together a, as far as I know, a a a not a business plan, a business case plan. In a, in a structure that is consumable by the board, consumed by you, consumed by Andy, consumed by the asylum resident. So against all the whys, there'd be a summary at the very beginning, an executive summary, but by the way, even that's the first document, that's in the, it's in the, it's in the structure. It's the last document that you write, it's a summary of all the other components. So Andy and I, together with David Reed, have built out that framework, Andy and Mr. Reed, I think even Jess as well, is busy. Aggregating all that data into one comprehensive document, that'll go through many revisions, right now, I think Andy and I targeted, I think we figured seven revisions by the time. We have a final document, so this is gonna take several months, there'll be revisions for the sanity group, a revision for the board review. Revision for any stakeholders you'd like to review, love to garner everyone's input at the stages, but before we can do that, we have to have this baseline of content. To work from, so I always kind of feel like we're jumping the gun here, let's get that baseline of content. Andy knows all the challenges that he needs to have, we need to have, because what's the minimum solution and why? What's the next step up, what's the ideal, and what's the kind of the, you know, the stretch goal, if you will, the stretch solution. Those will all be presented and all the justifications and R O Y of why you do this, if you, if you do the minimum, here's, I think what Andy kind of articulated today. Here's what you get back, if you do the next step up, here's what you get back, and then we can all debate whether that's worthwhile or not, right? But at least we're all working from factual data, not hyperbole, not, I think the building only costs two hundred and fifty dollars per square foot. Based on what, or this cost went up to eighteen percent based on what, right? There's a lot of something that's tossed out with no actual, you know, relevance of data or. Things that point back to where that data source came, so all that's gonna be encapsulated within this document. We just need to give Andy some time, like I said, if if I was to do this to to put in perspective. That dedicated, in my world, it would take me three weeks, a hundred and twenty hours to do it, Andy's gonna fight fires in the meantime. So so I need to take out three weeks and go do this, this is kind of the thing to do, so I think giving Andy three months. Even with the help of Jess, even with the help of David Reed and or myself, is a reasonable time for. Uh within that document, we've also outlined when we think, a time for it, what we can have it done, there's need to be a campaign launch to kind of sell this to the users. Uh I said I would help with the marketing materials and presenting this, it's just a lot of data, you gotta kind of distill that down into consumable chunks, what that would look like. It's all been part and built into this the framework that we've, that we've created, we just gotta give Andy some time, let him go do his thing. So today is what, it's March nineteenth, right, so March, April, May, you you know, June. We probably have a good draft to start working on, and once you get the first draft, the second ones start going pretty quick, right, they'll go, they'll go a lot fast. That first one's a set trove of information, I know we have a lot of it, alright, but we gotta put in a case of like. In an organized and consumable fashion, and anybody should be able to pick up, be in a total neophyte on on fire department, okay. I know zero about fire department, start from the beginning, why do we need a fire department, what are fires like, why do I need a second one, right, all those kinds of things. That I I assume the average person, I didn't know, so they don't know either, so that's the plan.
Okay.
Could I ask um have a suggestion, please?
Of course.
Um I would like the firefighters to be interviewed during this process because they live in it and they work it.
I think Andy's got that part of it, in fact.
Do you have surveys and or?
I've got a pretty good sense of firefighter's perspective, and and if I don't, they'd let me know.
And one of the things, to your point, Gillian, is, you know, we need to start off, what do we, you know, start off before we said what we're gonna do in the future, what do we have now? Tell me the fire department, give me an outside view, give me an inside view, interview the fire department, just take a picture of the guys, right? Just just get them engaged on, assuming I know zero about a fire department, what's a fire vest, what's a fire ladder truck do? Right, give them that kind of baseline pieces of information, so it's all there. And by the way, when people start to come back and rather than being, say someone on the defensive. I don't think they need to be that way, so when somebody asks a question, oh, that's on page forty-two, section six, well, number this will all be very highly organized, you know. And like, you know, John, John, John one, 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 nine, six, right, it's like the Bible or something, that that sense will be very structured, structured document. Right, and and I I I would like to think we can answer just darn near anybody's question.
Okay, I think, you know, kind of um jumping on that approach. Um and and I know it's, I mean, I have to have to say a couple of things, like, we have had. So many assessments of the fire department, and I think there's some that we need to kind of refresh ourselves on, like the emergency services. International, the Carlisle Wardman, then then, because those were all kind of taken as baseline for fire services guidance, and fire services guidance. You know, I remember how long Mark Perry and David Reed and the chief, they worked for, I think. Six weeks on that document before it was presented to the board in December. We had a whole special meeting in January, we took then two months to come up with a proposal for March. Which we put on the ballot in November, so I'm just, I I I don't disagree, Mark, that there's. More more information or maybe a lot of the same information, but presented differently and better, certainly.
Hundred percent, we got, I'm sure, he does leverage everything that you just discussed, can certainly be leveraged. You need to rewrite, read about the.
Sure, but but just on the actual decision-making, you know, because there's, um you know. As we've talked about, kind of what service level do we want, and that's always been the question from the beginning. The Fire Services Guidance Committee has given us a helpful frame of steps. So I'm gonna use that terminology because that's what the chief just took us through, um you know, the proposal. That was put forth in November twenty twenty-three would have us reach step three in eight to ten years, sort of the ballpark. So that, you know, we heard from voters was too expensive. Now, I'll talk a little bit about which voters we heard from, but we heard from voters, two to one, too expensive. So step two um is something I'm interested in looking at in terms of a service level of where we're trying to go. Um and and I know that that would be. It sounds like the biggest difference there, chief, if I'm understanding it, is it would um set aside the goal of enhancing EMS.
Right.
Is that the main difference?
Yeah, would uh would eliminate the transporting component.
But we would eliminate the transporting component there. Um so I just want to put that there, and I'm I'm curious because I think that we need to, as a board, get to um some agreement of. Of where we're trying to go, and maybe it's after the report, like in June, whenever it's it's ready. Um but I also think we need to decide when we're gonna go to voters, I mean, so we have to go to voters. I wanna thank you and Joyce and Will and everybody who's working so hard on supplementing. But there is no way to fund a second station without going to voters to ask for, let's just say, a lot more. Okay, I mean, we could do it at the board table without a vote, I'm not willing to do that at this point. Um but we need to get significant money, how much, how we structure it is kind of details. I just want to know if there's political will on this board table to go back out, and then when. And and I want to talk about when, just because we're in twenty twenty-four, okay, and November twenty twenty-four. Is by far the biggest turnout we're going to have.
So so Jess, to answer that question, I mean, the point, and I agree with you a hundred percent, by the way, so the plan was at the very latest, we'd be ready to go. To to Sile residents with with our story, everything's prepared, ready to go, right after, right after Labor Day, because that gives you a couple of months to get that story. But I mean, if we go in full force, to your point, so we can get it on the ballot, and they they.
Yeah, so let me, let me tell you a little bit, just to move this timeline up a little bit, so in order to get it on the ballot for November fifth. This board must act by not later than Tuesday, August thirteenth.
Got it, okay.
That means, and and we can't do it at the meeting on the thirteenth, that means we would have to take final action. Not later than our meeting in July, so we have two regular meetings in July, two regular meetings in June. Um so I would just say, you know, last time, it took us a couple of meetings to go through that, what it should look like. So I think, Mark, realistically, if we're gonna even meet the legal deadline, much less politically, it would behoove us to be ready. Earlier, but legally by July.
Let me articulate that a little bit, we we, I think we'll be done ready by late June, my thought was just, people on vacations and, I'm talking about the marketing campaign.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just talking about the legal.
Yeah, no, I got, I'm I'm obviously, I'm gonna, you know, take, take your lead on all that, whatever you, whatever you tell me, I'm sure is correct. Uh but yeah, I think we should be in pretty good shape by then, and then you're gonna have a very comprehensive document with. Is as simple or is is or as complex as some would like, it's gonna start off very simple, again with the executive summary, lots of pictures, you know. Things that for people to really consume, and if you want to dive into detail, it's all there in a very logical tree structure.
Uh Jess, what are those July dates, please?
So our regular board meetings are July ninth and July twenty-third.
Got it.
Or June eleventh and June twenty-fifth, or May fourteenth and May twenty-eighth, so. And and in terms of like turnout, you know, I mean, in November, just to give you a sense, like, you know, in November twenty twenty, of course. Um you know, was ten thousand voters um who came out of our fifteen thousand, um in a special election. Yeah, you know, so ten thousand voters, will ten thousand voters come out again, maybe, it's going to be close to that. Um I don't think, I mean, who knows, that's a question about national politics. But we're gonna have a lot of voters um this fall, the most that we're going to have for four years, so. It's an opportunity, and I'll say too plainly, November twenty twenty-three, the special election. November nineteenth, the special election, both for fire, and November twenty fifteen, the special election for the bus millage. You get lower turnout, but you also get property taxpayers coming out disproportionately. Because it's a single-issue millage, so I just want to say, I also think not only would it be more representative. But I think that it would have a higher chance of success in a general election.
So, thank you for that, um. I I'm in support of November twenty twenty-four as well. And uh is it, do we need to have a discussion as to whether it's going to be a millage? Or whether it's going to be a sad? And if it's going to be a sad, is it something that it's going to go uh to the vote, depending on the number of mills or what? Point number of mills, or is it something that this board is going to do under Act thirty-three of its own accord, which is allowed to do?
I would, I mean, what I'm interested in from this board is knowing if there's the political will to go to voters in November of twenty twenty-four. Um so that we have some.
Hundred percent.
Momentum, I I think, I think your question about not going to voters is different, but at minimum, I want to know if there's the political will to. To have that goal of going, you know, we're certainly not putting something on the ballot tonight, but to say, this is what we're working toward.
Well, more than that, I mean, I want to go, go to the board and 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 get the vote, get the win, right? I it it feels to me that all the other attempts, we haven't quite, like, we kind of got to the five-yard line and smacked the ball and walked up like. Wait a minute, we didn't quite get the touchdown yet, we gotta, I think we just have all our ducks in order this time, and and do what's necessary, what we actually think is gonna. Really, you know, ensure the safety of our residents, let's do that, but but the residents deserve a comprehensive document that really articulates that, and we've never. As near as I can tell, haven't done that in a way that's consumable, again, I know we've got that date out there, people work hard, we're gonna gather all that and leverage it all. But it hasn't been done in a consumable way, near as I can tell.
Is that document gonna come back, I'm sorry.
Is it gonna come back to the board?
No, go ahead, but Will, you should be watching.
I I I'm sorry, I'm listening and I'll I'll try and manage the interchange board.
Um is your document, you anticipate that it will have a specific recommendation with respect to. Uh the number of mills or point number of mills or?
Well, it'll be here, the here are these costs to do these things, how that gets done, I'm gonna leave that up to either Jess or you guys to figure out how all that. How that gets done, I'm gonna leave that up to either Jess or you guys to figure out how all that.
But it's gonna be a recommendation with respect.
Oh, of course, yeah, there'll be, there'll be, there'll be, and here's, here's four different, I mean, right now we've got four, it might be five, it's up to Andy, we haven't finished yet. But but let's, let's call it four, like I said, a good, better, best, and a minimalist. And here's what you get, and then we can all either decide as a board which one we want to take to the, take to the.
I think we need a couple.
The residents, but we're, it's not far enough along here. And it's not my document, by the way, it's our document, it's mainly Andy's doing all the work.
A few more minutes left, I'd like to give trustee Noel a chance to speak, and then we should probably think about how to wrap this up. So we're ready for our regular meeting at seven.
Okay, one of the things Mark left out was, we hope to engage the. Tax sanity group throughout the process. And they're, they're gonna have input into this. So I, one of my concerns that I expressed at the meeting, our first meeting with the tax group. Was I didn't want to repeat some of the mistakes that we made before. And I want us as a board to be very aware of that. Along the way, it can, we have to be checking in and collaborating.
Hundred percent, yeah, there's, like I said, there'll be seven rows of this document, I can't remember all the different touch points. But every row is some type of touch, touch point outside of this group. Either we're going back to the board, we're going back to Texas, uh sanity committee, there's, there's, again, seven rows before we. Right now that we've estimated before, there's a final that we're ready to present as a completed document.
Trustee Noel, did you have further?
I'm done, thank you.
I I would just like to, I'm mindful of the clock, um, and that fact that we have another whole agenda at seven o'clock. Um, it seems to me, Mark, um, that I I and I really appreciate all the work that you and others are putting into. Coming up with this comprehensive document. Um, at the same time, I appreciate all the work that the uh fire guidance committee did before. I I think um part of what I took away from that experience is that. There's, this is a really big issue to wrap your arms around and to try and organize in a way that's consumable. As you, as you put it, sort of understandable by the the general public, the people who are less familiar with the issues. And um we have, um, so that in itself is a challenge. But I think, looking at the calendar, if we're serious about putting this on the ballot in November. We have to think in a much tighter timeframe than than I think what we've been operating with or what it sounds like you've been operating with. And so I would just suggest that um one of the takeaways from this evening is to do a reality check on. On how much time we have before this board would need to make a decision. Because it's not just this board making a decision to put it on the ballot, then there's a whole process, as as you were saying, an education process. But also presumably somebody organizing a campaign, not, not this body. But somebody organizing a campaign to um win those, win the support of voters in November. So everything has to allow for a a process to sort of flow from the finish of the of the document.
That's exactly right, and again, it doesn't necessarily, doesn't have to be all be a serial process, right? There could be things that run in parallel, this initial part is kind of somewhat serial. And I also want to add to your point, all the work, hard work that people have done is being leveraged in the corporate. We're not gonna, again, re- rewrite something that's already been written, there's no need to do that. And David Reed, I think, was the owner of a lot of that, that's why he's part of that committee, to make sure that we leverage all his, his hard work. So um I hear you loud and clear, I, maybe it might would not be a bad idea. Because Jess or Will, you guys know these deadlines and timelines of things, I had you guys just do a quick, you know, look thing, like, oh, yeah, Mark, you need to have a date.
And happy to help.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be good.
Well, it looks like it would either need to be June or July that we would need to target one of our regular meetings unless we hold a special meeting.
I, and I, I have to say, I I think that, Mark, if we can get to the point, because we don't yet have consensus here. I heard an idea about not going to voters, I've heard an idea, I haven't heard everybody say November. And so we need to kind of figure out, and then we also need to determine kind of the service level we're going for. The when, how, and what are we going for?
Yeah, so that comes later, this is what I kind of discussed with Andy. And I discussed it with Mark yesterday, and I, you know, Mark. Wanted to wait until we had a more comprehensive discussion, so I didn't push it.
Um, yeah, but we gotta be able to do both, because I like that idea.
No matter what, we need to get you up.
Yeah, bad and then also the next.
Well, I would like to suggest that this is a good point at which to end, so that we have a couple of minutes in between this meeting and the next. Um, is there a motion to adjourn? Okay, move by risers, support by Noel, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed, our special meeting is adjourned.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. We will, we will reconvene in just a few minutes for our regular meeting.